Meeting of Monday, September 30th to order. Councilmember Berman.
Yes.
Councilmember Burt. Councilmember Holman. Councilmember Klein. Councilmember Niss. Councilmember Price. Mayor Scharf. Councilmember Schmidt. Vice Mayor Shepard. Five present. Council will be going into a closed session. Employee Organization Service Employees International Union. And I would like to add to the list of designated representatives Melissa Trunkay and Nancy Nagel.
And there's no reportable action. And now we are moving on to our first, well, actually, we're moving on to City Manager comments.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Two quick items to report. First of all, an announcement that the Greer Park pathway and parking lot repair and resurfacing project will be underway beginning Wednesday, October 4th through Friday, October 6th, and Monday, October 9th through Tuesday, October 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. During periods of construction, the parking lot and large sections of the pathways will be closed to public access, but then we'll have improved Parkway and parking lot at the end of that. For additional information, folks could call Public Works at (650) 617-3183. And then, secondly, some good recognition for our City Utilities Department. In a recent nationwide survey, City Utilities key account representatives ranked a number one in the country for customer satisfaction relating to servicing large business customers. The ranking came from ESource, an independent energy industry intelligence organization which conducts annual national benchmark surveys of utilities' commercial customers. And Palo Alto's large business customers gave utility service an overall satisfaction score of 9.1 on a 10-point scale. Utilities received high scores in all categories, including satisfaction with key account reps and the perceived value provided by the city relative to its energy rate. So congratulation to folks and the service being provided and being recognized nationally. And that's all I have to report.
All right, now we're actually doing Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcement. Remember, we've moved the time. And the first thing I have is a small announcement. I'd like to say, Jim, you know, it's been brought to my attention that you'll be recognizing our employees at the annual employee recognition picnic on Thursday, October 3rd. And I believe it's customary, at that time, you're going to recognize employees who've served 30, 25, 10, 15, 10, and five years. And I believe, Jim, that you're hit that five-year mark, haven't you?
Actually, it's funny, because it feels more like 25 years, but...
Well, I've heard that. Didn't you tell someone that before you took this job, there would have been no problem hiking the John Muir Trail? So, Jim, actually, I have the traditional five-year Kieran that we give to employees at the five-year mark. And, you know, I wanted to come down and personally congratulate on the five-year mark.
Congratulations. Your job's well done. There we see it. Almost 20.
So, I'll also report out that I attended the NCPA Annual Conference meeting up in Squaw Valley. It was interesting, learned a lot of different things. Nothing in particular to report out on that. Other than that, there are some NCPA issues in terms of they'll be looking at redoing all of the agreements with Palo Alto and all of the other cities. And we've asked them to also look at the bylaws and a bunch of other issues like that, which will be coming forward to the council probably in 2014. Oh, and Councilmember Shepard attended with me. Sorry. I see no other lights on Councilmember Comments, Questions. Vice Mayor Shepard?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, yesterday, I had a wonderful time out at Airport Day. And it really is when Palo Alto turns out all of the families with young children are just agog. My grandson never wanted to leave. He knows all of the words for truck, airplane, and trains, and other big vehicles. And it really is one of those times when you pinch yourself that you live in Palo Alto and all these of experience, you know, not to support business, but families. And it was really wonderful to get up personal with these aircrafts.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes, a couple of updates. First, we had our monthly meeting of the San Francisco Creek Joint Power Authority. And the meeting continued to focus on the construction plan on the downstream of 101, which we're doing early stages on. We had a couple of contract updates with utilities that are involved in this, and the Water District, ongoing dynamics over the upper half of the downstream of 101, and certain land access issues. And then continuing discussion with some of the negotiation that's going on with the final environmental approval. So, the bottom line on this is it's moving quickly on a variety of fronts and not always smooth sailing, but pushing forward aggressively. So, it's, there's a lot of balls in the air on this. The second is that the Caltrain policymaker advisory group had their meeting, and it focused on an update from Caltrain staff on level boarding, which is an issue that has not had a great deal of attention. It doesn't sound as glamorous as electrification. And a number of experts in the region have been pushing Caltrain to really put a greater focus on this. And out of that, we got the preliminary analysis, which really shows that level boarding is perhaps in the range of 50% of the value of what electrification is at a fraction of the cost. And in all likelihood, both things are going to be needed long-term to be able to have the capacity in the system that is going to be needed. And on top of that, because level boarding improves the efficiency of the line, it drives capacity as well, or basically attracts ridership and people to move toward Caltrain, because between electrification and this, it becomes a faster, more efficient system. So, we're going to hear more about it. They didn't have adequate depth on the cost benefits, but we requested that, and we're going to be hearing more. Finally, at the last, what do we, now what I've forgotten, our Regional Committee on Rail? What am I?
Rail Committee.
Rail Subcommittee?
No, no.
A PCC.
Peninsula Cities Consortium, PCC. There was quite a bit of discussion about the fact that this policymaker working group is not being well-attended, and that there has been disgruntlement by a lot of the elected officials, that it's really not being given the opportunity to have any say-so in its agenda, and not really much of an advisory role. And so, the PCC cities collectively said that they were interested in writing individual letters to Caltrain, sharing their concerns and their recommendations. So, two of us are responsible for drafting a template, which is intended to be written as PCC. We don't take a collective action. We take actions and then return them to our individual cities for whether they want to take action on it. But there certainly was a consensus that this is a problem.
Seeing no further lights, now we'll move to Oral Communications, and Palo Alto Free Press.
I've acquired the new Apple 5S. It's finger-recognition, so it's truly hands-free. I can open it with my nose. It's pretty fascinating. Actually, what I wanted to talk about was the independent police auditors. I had filed a third-party complaint, and they just now, it just now reached its conclusion after five months. It's unacceptable. It really is. There are no matrices. They're held accountable to no one, Mr. Keen, really, in all honesty. You know, I would kind of like it to, you know, hiring a contractor, and you're having him remodel your bathroom for $100,000, okay? And he's unwilling to give you any status reports or updates as to his progress. That was never the case. These attorneys, and I have read each and every one of their reports from since inception, they obfuscate everything. It's incredible. They speak lawyer. It's just unbelievable, the type of language that they use. And quite surprisingly, I don't understand how any individual can really, you need to be a walking lexicon in order to understand what they have to say. It's that bad. So, they need to be held accountable to someone. And I don't know, Mr. Keen, are you fearful of this team of attorneys? Is that the case? I mean, you know, I send emails, I leave them voicemails, they don't respond. And the last time I looked at the hierarchy of the city of Palo Alto, it's the residents that are in charge, and then it trickles down to you councilmembers, and then delegates down to Jim Keen's level. So, if you could do something, you can find out why it's taken five months to investigate a third-party complaint. And oh, by the way, when I complained about my son, there was a particular officer that stalked my son for four miles because he didn't have a license plate. I issued a third-party complaint against the officer. Jananko denied it. He denied it. And I have the emails. I have the emails. He denied my third-party complaint as a parent. And yet, we set a precedent here. He accepted my third-party complaint on a racial profiling stop. Would you please find out the answer to that, please? It seems to me that he picks and chooses the issues, sensitive issues, that come before this council, or comes before the community. It's terrible. So, if you could do something about that, Mr. Keen, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Victor O'Jack, former Mayor Victor O'Jackian.
So, I'm Victor O'Jackian, and though I'm here tonight to speak to the council, really, a lot of my comments are really directed at the community. I'm here to say the O'Jackian family is in support of Measure D, and I'll give you some of the, or I'm going to make a few comments about why. First of all, there's been a lot of things written about the fact that a petition was signed to put this on the ballot. The fact of the matter is that that's no guarantee for a victory in an election. When I served on the council, there was a different anti-group at the time. It happened to be anti-fluoride. When they put a petition in front of the people of Palo Alto, and they signed it, went to election, that election failed on an 89 to 11% vote. So, really, the people of Palo Alto are going to find themselves with a choice here in a couple of months. And one of the clear choices, by voting yes for Measure D, they assure themselves that we're going to have an affordable housing project in Palo Alto. No other comments or options that are made to suggest that affordable housing could happen under some other scenario are a guarantee. If you vote yes for Measure D, it is a guarantee. When I served on the council, I imagine this hasn't changed a lot. When we got senior housing projects in front of us, whether they were affordable or not, the common comment that was made was that we had a demand that left us with a waiting list of between eight to 14 years. So, these projects, and this particular one, I would imagine has a high demand and is something that's needed, in my opinion. In fact, because of some of the arguments I've been hearing, if we take a look at some of the affordable housing projects we have in Palo Alto right now, which are multi-story and a number of them in residential neighborhoods, I'm not sure if a group of people would allow those to pass. I live three-quarters of a block from Webster Woods. It's 68 units. It's been there for over 30 years, or I've lived near it for over 30 years. And frankly, I've never heard a complaint about Webster Woods in terms of traffic, parking, or any other matter. One of the things that troubles me about this whole matter is the fact that the Palo Alto Housing Corporation, a nonprofit developer with an incredible reputation in this town and well-serving people, seems to have been villainized and associated with other developers. I think that's not a good or accurate description. So, let me make one final comment, because I know the light's going to go off. I've heard some people talk about their vision for Palo Alto. Let me tell you what my vision is. It's a little different, I think, from some other people. My vision is that Palo Alto exists as a community, and that, in fact, we continue to diversify as a community. That has been one of the cherished principles of this town ever since I've lived here. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm one of those people that Vic was talking about, an anti-person. Haven't been called that recently. I'm here to clarify some misconceptions that are being told about people like myself, Bob Moss, and others who are opposed to the rezoning of the Mayfield Orchard. Our opposition to the Mayfield site Orchard of Measure D on the November ballot is not about senior housing. We are not opposed to the development of senior rental apartments on the Mayfield site, if developed within the current RM15 zone on that site, which would permit 41 apartments for very low and low-income seniors. We are, however, opposed to high-density rezoning of residential property. In this case, a four-times increase in the multifamily zoning from RM15, which, as you know, permits 15 units per acre as a maximum, to, in essence, RM60, given that the project contemplates 60 units on just over one acre. And you know, of course, there is no such thing as RM60 in our municipal code. In addition, a threefold increase from four to 12 single-family homes, when more than half of the almost 2.5-acre site is sold for, to a nonprofit market-rate developer. We view the Mayfield site rezoning as being symbolic of what is going on all over Palo Alto. There are simply too many high-density rezoning via the planned-community rezoning process, which is creating major problems for Palo Altons all over town. Traffic jams, lack of adequate onsite parking causing spillover parking into adjacent residential neighborhoods, and drivers using neighborhood streets to avoid long lines of slow-moving traffic on more major roads, thereby jeopardizing the safety of children going to and from neighborhood schools, four of them in our area. In summary, we're voting against Measure D for two principal reasons. It allows high-density development on the Mayfield site that we believe is harmful to our single-family neighborhood, as senior units could be built on the site under current zoning in a way that would be consistent with our neighborhood, and we support that. And we want to send a clear message to you and to City Hall to stop the incremental degradation of Palo Alto by approving planned community zones that sweep away longstanding and historic site regulations that have protected all of us here in Palo Alto for decades. We want you and others to please understand that. Thank you very much.
Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and councilmembers. Last week and the week before, I mentioned to you that I thought it would be a good idea if you decided at some point how large Palo Alto should be, what the maximum would be. I think you have to have some kind of an idea. You can't just keep going along. It's like, it's like putting on weight. Suppose you're anorexic, and you decide, they tell you you ought to put on weight, and you put on weight, and you put on weight, and you put on weight, and pretty soon, you're 220 pounds. You have to have a plan. And I think you have to stick to the plan. When I see that you have had planners, devoted volunteers who have given of their time, plus people who have been paid a handsome salary, to make the plans, which are totally ignored. No developer, no big developer, ever comes in and says, "Well, here are the guidelines, and my project conforms to it, and let's go." Never, never. And probably on a property that is totally maxed out to say, "Well..." It's a lot like a family that has teenagers, and they tell the daughter, "Well, now you're going to high school, and so we'll permit a little, we'll permit dating in groups, and maybe we'll see how that works out, and you, and I want you in by 10 o'clock on Saturday night." And then the kid looks at them and says, "Oh, really? Well, I plan to go to this sleepover with this nice young man, and by the way, may I borrow the car?" Shh. You know, you aren't, you aren't in control anymore. You've set what the good way should be. I think you need to stop at this point, well, as the previous gentleman said, you have more and more and more. And the very good thing of the senior housing development could be done in a better way, I believe. It could be done simply by rearranging the existing floor allowance ratio, which is 600 square feet per person, and going back down to a little under, between 375 and 400 per unit, and having the rest of the area downstairs used for community services, for which there is a great need. And I'd like to suggest that you give that some serious thought, because we could use the community services, we could certainly use the senior housing, and you're going to run out of these seniors that can pay. Thank you.
Bob Moss.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf and councilmembers. Well, one of the problems with the Maybell development is we can't seem to agree on traffic impacts. And I think part of the problem is we're all speaking different languages. The council seems to be speaking Russian, the staff is talking Urdu, the Yes and De are talking Italian, and the No and De people are speaking French. So, let's all talk the same language. And I passed out a sheet that gives you some figures on how you can calculate actual traffic counts. And it also gives you an explanation of why there's such a big difference. If you go down to the apartments per piece, in the PC zone, per day, with 60 apartments using the 2008 VTA model, 2.2 trips per day, it's 132 trips from the apartments. And from the homes, 10 trips per day, because that's the standard for single-family homes. So, you're now talking about a total of 252 trips. And that was the old system that we looked at. And as you know, we said that was out of date. We had a traffic engineer who looked at it and said you should be using the 212 VTA model. And sure enough, a week after you approved the project, you approved a change in the way you did transportation studies in the comprehensive plan, and you put in the 212 model. And if you use that, the trips go up to 210, and the total trips to 330. Now, go back and look at the existing zoning. In the worst case, if you have 38 apartments with the RM15 plus the bonus, plus the four homes, plus three of the homes that have 6,000-square-foot lots have cottages, you're up to a total of 370 trips. But then, if you look at what is considered a reasonable actual traffic generation from senior housing, and I referenced the report where they did 24 senior housing projects all over the country, the trips per day range from 4.52 to 5.64. The 4.52 includes one project with over 3,100 units. If you drop that out, you're at the 5.64. I took an intermediate of five, and that gives you 420 trips per day, which is a reasonable number to estimate for traffic from a senior project like this. At the low end, 4.52, it's 391. So, that's why we keep saying that this project, the PC zone, is going to create as much or more traffic than existing zoning. So, I hope you look at that. And one final thing, I understand there have been some misunderstandings about our concerns with the way that the council has handled this project. And I want to assure you that at no point have we said that you have been at all inappropriate or acted improperly. I think that what you did was not a good idea, but I think it was done honestly.
Thank you. All right, and now we move on to the approval of the minutes. Councilmember Holman.
Yes, I would ask that the minutes of August 19 be continued to allow city clerk to have an opportunity to go back and review the video of the joint meeting with ARB and the council, and to work with relevant staff, planning staff, to compose a more representative analysis of what happened at that meeting.
And that's seconded by Councilmember Burt. Do you wish to speak more to your motion?
I just think that, well, just what I said, I think that a more accurate analysis would be appropriate here. And I have a concern that if this is what goes forward, it only presents that there are issues that the ARB raised, but there are also directions the council gave as individuals that aren't captured here.
Councilmember Burt? Yeah, I'll just support Councilmember Holman's motion on this. I also read this and thought that it didn't really reflect what was said and what was thought at that meeting.
Should they do verbatim minutes?
I would, I'd just like you to, if possible, include in your motion an approval of the September 9th.
Happy to.
And is that okay with the second, or? All right. If we could then vote on the board? And that passes on a, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 to 1 with councilmembers. Is it Berman?
Yeah, I wasn't there.
Abstaining. All right. With councilmembers, Niss and Price absent.
Yes. We missed it.
Price? Oh, Karen.
Karen.
Karen, did you vote on that?
Yeah, I did.
I counted your vote, Karen.
I did it.
All right. So, now we're moving on to the consent calendar. Can I, oh.
Two speakers.
Yes, two speakers. Herb Bark on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. You have an item before you that covers community facilities that is defined as all, as certain buildings and premises. And based on the discussion you've been having, those premises include things that are open to the sky, like parking lots. And I recall that just last year, you had an amendment before you for regulations dealing with community facilities that also dealt with buildings and premises. But for some obscure reason, the term that was used to define them was called covered facilities. And there was an ambiguity whether covered meant it was subject to... facilities," and there was an ambiguity whether "covered" meant it was subject to the regulations or whether it meant it had something covering them. And in that discussion of that regulation, a part of the language had to deal with entering or remaining in the covered facilities. And during that discussion, it was brought out that, you know, sometimes people are just passing through, you know, for example, walking from Middlefield Road through Lucy Stern to get to Hopkins Avenue and Harriet Street. So the portion of the regulations dealing with entering was removed, and it just referred to remaining in the facilities past a certain hour. And now, in the ordinance before you, which deals with many of the same facilities, and it restores that word "enter" at the bottom of page, packet page 68. And there's one other change, and that is the regulations are not considered a violation of municipal law, subject to criminal penalties, although they might be subject in some way to state or federal penalties. But the ordinance before you is subject to criminal penalties under the municipal code. So I would think you should make this consistent. One thing you could do is just simply modify your regulations and to do the things that you want to do. But since apparently you want to make this subject to criminal penalties, I would do the same thing that you did with the regulations and eliminate the concept of entering and being just a concern of remaining someplace that's prohibited after a certain hour, because people take walks at night, either by themselves or with other people or with a family pet, and I don't think that's a reason why you should have a criminal penalty. Also, I pointed out in my letter to you that the language of the definition defines dedicated parkland as being something other than the structures that are on it. And I think that just requires a rewording of it to indicate that there are certain things on dedicated parkland that, you know, people can't go into after a certain hour. Thank you.
Stephanie Muñoz.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. I also am concerned about community facilities. I don't think that anybody would claim that, because we had our grandson at International Children's School, or someone went to dance classes there, that Palo Alto therefore was an exclusive country club or educational institution for the rich, because only the rich could use Cubberly, not the poor. However, with respect to the poor people who have used Cubberly, it does seem to me that you're acting like judges and you're penalizing those people. And I'd like you to act, consider, if you actually were a judge, all of you, just think about it. Suppose before you, you have these people, and they're accused of... What? Well, they're accused of something that makes them going to be penalized, and they can't use community facilities. You're doing this as a sop to offended neighbors, but it does nothing to address their concerns. Society at large is not obliged to spare the comfortable the sight of the poverty-stricken, but we are obliged, and pay policemen a lot, to protect people from murder and assault, and that is what the car campers would like, the safety provided by numbers, and I believe they have a right to it. In fact, their presence provides safety to homeowners walking their dogs and walking around. To assure yourself that these people are okay, you have only to limit, "okay" in the sense of good people, not bad people, you have only to limit nighttime access to persons and vehicles registered to be there at night. Persons who bother others are a different story. The strongest Cubberly objection was to a man who was flashing, that is exposing his genitals, and we should make serious efforts to prevent it. It's a communication that a vulnerable person, woman or child, can be obligated to partake of the offender's sexuality whether she wants to or not, and that's completely unacceptable. But saying that needy people may not use the showers provided by their taxes at 6:00 a.m. does nothing to achieve that good purpose. And in addition, and this is what I want you to think about, many fair-minded persons have accused you of punishing the innocent because of the actions of a few, but in a society built on the rule of law, what you are doing is much, much worse. You have no, no evidence that the person who are committing these infractions, misdemeanors, or crimes are in fact the sour users, or the car parkers, or the homeless at all. For all you know, the person offending is a millionaire pervert, owner of a mansion or two. For you to insist that the rich are automatically good and the poor evil is not only stupid, it's a heresy against what America is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have a motion for the approval of the consent calendar?
Someone?
All right, if we could vote on that?
Yeah, there's reasons why. No, this is a correction.
This is a correction. You should change your vote.
You want to vote for this one?
You have the ordinance in front of you. Okay. I will, it passes on a 5 to 2 vote with Councilmember Holman voting no and Councilmember Berman abstaining, with councilmembers Niss and Price absent. Okay, moving on. So now we're at the action item, which is discussion of possible adoption of core values, and we have a few speakers. First speaker is Teri Godfrey. Oh, yeah, you know, we can do the presentation first. We have a staff presentation on this. Maybe you'd like to hear the staff presentation first. I was getting ahead of myself here.
Sure.
I'll call you back.
Oh.
No, no, we have a staff presentation.
Sure, okay, thank you, council members. I'll try to move through this quickly, but I know there's been some time since the council referred this to policy and services back in, I think we were in March or whatever, and then we did some work on this. But I think the easiest way to respond to this is, of course, that this grew out of the council's priority discussions at the start of the year, and I think the council did some really good, ineffective work on the priorities, and it made it pretty clear that there were some sort of ongoing values or guiding principles that you didn't want to see lost in the priority-setting process, and asked the Policy and Services Committee to take an initial look at how to structure a retreat. Obviously, this is kind of a mini-retreat tonight since we're at a regular council meeting. But the committee's recommendations were for, one was to appoint a subcommittee of the mayor, the committee chair, Policy and Services Councilmember Niss, who is not here tonight, and myself, to organize the guiding principles and core values submitted by council members. And the report lists the individual council member submissions, and I would just say that the committee tried to take a look at what the council had submitted and craft fairly simple, to understand and list of core values, there are five actually with some subheadings, trying to capture generally what the council had said, but in any action like that, I'm sure that, you know, there are going to be different perspectives on whether we did that completely accurately, or is there another approach? But the attempt was to try to simply express in some understandable language core values that would be also relevant and easy for folks to understand, and that's what we did here. The committee also recommended is to whether, they come back with a recommendation as to whether they should be called guiding principles or core values, and the recommendation was core values, and then also to generate some questions for the council discussion. So I won't go through all of those, but, you know, we tried to be responsive to the, the subcommittee tried to be responsive to the council, the committee's directives. And so we did put some questions together. First of all, do we have the right description or definition of core values? And in particular, there's a proposed preamble to the values that's included in the report, and so the, one of the questions the council needs to consider is, you know, is the preamble clear and well-articulated, and does it get to your definition of what core values would be? And very quickly, I would just read, the preamble reads as follows, "In addition to its annual priorities, the perspective of the city council, both outward facing to the community and as directions to the staff, directives to the staff, is expressed through this statement of core values. These core values are foundational and ongoing, timeless, and should be assumed to inform the council's decisions and staff actions every day and in every applicable encounter." So again, a first effort to try to express, when we're talking about core values, what they mean and how they could be used. And so, does that work for the council? And then there are a series of questions on page three that are really just dealing with the core values. Are they clearly defined? Is there the right descriptions? And then beyond the report, I would just say this, having been through these kind of exercises myself many times over the years, what this really constitutes is a group, in this case, the city council, the elected representatives of the community. Your expression of an agreement you reach amongst yourselves is how to state the core values that would, should guide your actions and ultimately the staff's. Obviously, those could be changed by any subsequent council, but I think your intention was enough that these, these would be clear, that these could be seen. You could certainly subscribe to the fact that this would capture the ongoing core values for the city, and that they would be, that they would make sense and be relevant to the community when you express them. So that was the sort of focus that we took in trying to compress maybe 50 different sort of ways of identifying core values. I would say, if you had 50 core values, they're not going to be very useful to folks to try to use them as a guide. So simplicity and relevance are important, but also knowing the fastidiousness of my council, getting the words right, I know, is important to you all in addition to what it is that you want to capture. So that's what we have before you, and I'm sure, obviously, well, Mr. Mayor, you're running the meeting, how much time you have, can see that we allocate or we ought to use on this. We're here as staff to support you as best as possible. Thanks.
All right. Now we'll welcome back Teri Godfrey, to be followed by Ray Baketti.
Good evening. I'm Teri Godfrey. I'm a Oxford Avenue resident, a parent, and a volunteer around town. Volunteer in things related to schools and kids mostly. I'm also a steering committee member for Project Safety Net, which you'll recall is mission around suicide prevention for teens and youth well-being. I'm here to address the core values discussion. I'm sorry to be a little late in the game. I sent you a note earlier today, which I had intended to come to you long before a retreat, when this might be discussed, and I was caught a little flat-footed on this being agenda item tonight, so I apologize for being so tardy. As a steering committee, Project Safety Net has obviously values youth, and was very appreciative of it being a priority for the city for the last few years. And this year, when the structure changed and it was no longer a priority, the opportunity for it to be a value seemed like an obvious fit for us. And so, as a steering committee, we would like to have it listed as a value. And I see the current proposal doesn't exactly call it out. There's certainly quality of life and a value that addresses all citizens. And while I love all citizens, I love kids, I love old people, I love middle-aged mothers of two, it seems like Palo Alto has sort of a special relationship to their youth, and that we have for many, many years demonstrated that by having great libraries and schools and passing all kinds of bonds and taxes and things to support our kids. And people move here because they want to raise their kids here, and it's sort of a virtuous circle. As people come in, they want the youth to be healthy and happy, and it's just part of what we do. We love us all. That's a little like motherhood and apple pie. Youth feels like it's the thing that we are good at, and that makes us different, and is really, really, really a value. I understand that staying with five is good. I also noticed in some of the notes that some of you had suggested four to six or five to seven. So I would humbly suggest thriving youth as a value. It could be value number six, or the first two maybe could go together in a quality-of-life kind of way that puts public safety and quality of life together for all citizens, and thriving youth could be one of five then. Those are just suggestions, and I say that on behalf of my friends on the steering committee. There are 13, 14 of us, and I know you know them, so Brenda Corio, Jessica Lewis, Leigh Erickson, Pat Markovich, Sigrid Pinsky, Kathleen Blanchard, who is here with us tonight, Rob DeGosu, who's here, Minka Vandeswag, Ronnie Gilenson, Linda Lenoir, Becky Beckham, Shashank Joshi, Ray Baketti, and myself. We come asking to have this value explicitly listed. Thanks.
So, Teri, if you could just stay up there. Vice Mayor Shepherd has a question for you.
Yes. What organizations are all these members of the steering committee from? And they're assigned by the organization, is that correct?
Yes. So they cover YCS, the city, and different departments of the city, because you heard some city names there. We have PTA Council, ACS, PAU City has a few, Shashank Joshi is from Lucy Packard. Ray and I are just volunteers in the community. So, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I remembered that correctly.
Yes, yeah. Yes, exactly. Youth-serving organizations, and they have someone sitting at the table.
Thank you. Ray Baketti?
Actually, I'm representing the Human Relations Commission on Project Safety Net. Making thriving youth a community value doesn't pose a negative judgment on all of the good work that has always gone on in Palo Alto. What it does is acknowledge that we have no business being complacent. As evidence, I would cite from the Developmental Asset Survey in 2010, some of the results. Youth feeling, high school youth, this is, feeling a sense of personal power, 48 percent. Committed to service to others, 51 percent. Engaged in creative activities, 31 percent. Experiencing positive family communication, 32 percent. And valuing equality and social justice, 56 percent. What a community value of the kind that PSN Steering Committee advocates is a way of putting wind under the wings of the work that needs to continue through PSN and other initiatives. Whether it is in suicide prevention or in youth well-being more broadly conceived, it's vital for us as a community and our children, as our treasure, to keep their growing up well in the front of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Muñoz, to be followed by Kathleen Blanchard.
Good evening, Mayor Shepherd. I have to apologize for being here for the third time. It's just a concatenation of interests about values that concern me very much. I, first of all, the Palo Alto of it, I was born in San Francisco, and so was my father. Even though he came down to Stanford and graduated from Stanford, we stayed in Palo Alto until I was, well, we stayed in San Francisco for quite a long time. I just wanted to point out, sort of on behalf of those neighbors of Maybelle whom you think are being rather unreasonable and selfish, that if we had wanted to live in a city... are being rather unreasonable and selfish, that if we had wanted to live in a city, we would have stayed in San Francisco, which is a real city. That's a process. But what I wanted to mention particularly was somebody much earlier, was Jane Stanford. Palo Alto owes its existence to Jane Stanford and her values, her core values. And the one which is interesting to me tonight, the others, we well-known. We've seen, we've all seen Memorial, Mem Church with the biblical scenes, and we understand the culture that interested her and informed her. But what interested me particularly was that she had Palo Alto with her friends organized and set up because Mayfield and Menlo Park were wet-drinking towns and did not want to give up that great source of revenue just because it would corrupt the little students in Stanford University. And I think she was right. She said that every piece of land in Palo Alto would have a restrictive covenant on it with no liquor to be sold, not drinking, mind you. Because they had a winery, they grew wine and grapes. Just that if you have businesses in town whose livelihood and prospect of wealth and prosperity depend on selling liquor, which is an exploitation of the youth, that you're going to have big problems. You'd have some problems, of course, because kids, they're wild and they're away from home from the first time, and so you'd have a lot of problems. But you have more if it's to somebody's interest to make money. That's what I see with the developers. Because it's in the developer's interest to make millions and millions of dollars, the core values of Palo Alto, which I would consider to be open space, orchards, have gone by the boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Blanchard?
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Blanchard, and I'm a parent in the community and also a member of the Project Safety Net. And I just want, I'm not going to repeat everything that Terry and Ray said so eloquently, but I just wanted to add my advocacy to youth being an express value, core value of this city, which I think distinguishes it and is the reason why we chose to live here when we had the whole barrier to consider when we moved back here in 2003. I know Palo Alto is definitely a destination city for other families as well. And yet, at the same time, I know that families are beginning to leave Palo Alto, and I find that very sad. And I think we need to recognize that all the good work that has been done over the many, many years for youth and is continuing to be done, we make that explicit to ourselves and to the public by calling it out as a core value. I want to mention that tonight, when I was driving home, I was listening to NPR, and coincidentally, there was a program, and it was talking about the crisis of family in San Francisco. And how, to the surprise, as people realize it, many families are fleeing that city, particularly when the children reach school age. And the numbers they cited were quite surprising in terms of the decline of families in the city. And it seems to me that if we expressly include youth as a core value, we'll never find ourselves in that place, for sure, because we are dedicated to making sure that this community will always be here for our children. And I would find that particularly important. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we return to council. Councilmember Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you very much to you and Councilmember Niss and the city manager for the work that you guys did. I'm putting together the draft. As I was kind of trying to think about the difference between council priorities, core values, even guiding principles, although for the purposes of the first, my first few comments, I'm really talking about council priorities versus core values, I kind of had a different understanding or definition of what core values was. And then, the city manager's comments helped me better understand kind of where the draft was coming from. But for me personally, rather than core values being the core values of the council, which frankly, would be something that would change as councils change, I really took it as Mrs. Godfrey, or Ms. Godfrey Terry, mentioned in her email, which I don't think she meant to, but she actually called them community values. And I think that's right. To me, these are really the core values of the community as opposed to the core values of the council. And I think this exercise gives us a really kind of unique and awesome and exciting opportunity to engage the community in, ironically enough, a way that hits on the proposed core value number four, which is open government and civic participation. You know, we can really engage the community to find out what they think, to find out what they think our core values are. And, you know, from that, new ideas might get introduced that we haven't necessarily thought about, or they might help us define some of the core values that we have thought about in a different way. And in particular, this idea that I had this afternoon while I was thinking about this was like a community whiteboard. And this can be a virtual whiteboard. This can be a webpage on our, or a page on our website where community members can go and, you know, input what they think are the core values of Palo Alto to them. It could possibly, and, you know, this has to be thought through a little more than I have, but it could even include a physical whiteboard that we could put up in the lobby of City Hall to give people a chance to come in and, you know, write down what they think personally core values are. Obviously, we'd want to set some sort of, try to set some rules so that it doesn't devolve into comments that we see on the blogs. But I think it'd be a really cool opportunity to let the community engage with us in telling us what they think the core values are. And then, as we, you know, maybe we'll put a time limit on that, on that period of time when the community can let us know what they think. And then, staff could gather that data and put it together for the council to consider. And an idea that I had, and it might be optimistic, is next year's retreat. You know, this year's retreat, we set three new council priorities. It's the first year for all of those council priorities. I don't think anybody would argue that we've solved any of those three council priorities. And so, hopefully, our discussion at the retreat in regards to council priorities doesn't take, you know, we don't need too long to discuss those. And that leaves a great opportunity for the council to have a more informal and lengthier than, you know, the time allotted tonight, discussion on core values or guiding principles. And also allow the community to have another, you know, in between now and then, plenty of time to reach out to us personally or via email, but then also come to that meeting if they want to, to let us know what they think there. So, that was kind of, in general, the idea that I had for how we can really take advantage of this opportunity to hear from the community, you know, have time for us to really have a more informal conversation than we can necessarily have in official council meetings. And so, I guess I'll make a motion, even though I've never done this before, so I'm not sure what I'm doing, that staff return to council in, let's say, early November with an outreach plan or a plan for community outreach to solicit and encourage, or maybe encourage and solicit, input from the community on what they think Palo Alto's core values With the goal, and I don't know if this part's appropriate, of, don't put that in the memo or in the motion, with the goal of having a lengthier council discussion at our 2014 retreat. Oh, okay, sorry. So, yeah, let's put that in the motion. I didn't want in the motion, the, my little, so where I said, I don't know if this should go in the motion. But yeah, sorry. So, November with an outreach plan, just as an encouraging for from the community, with the goal of having a council discussion at, or with the goal of having a council discussion at the 2014 retreat. That's, we can tweak it. And now, I'll leave it at that for now, and then I'll speak a little bit.
Well, are you done? Do you want to speak to your motion? I heard a second from Councilmember Burt.
So, let me speak real quickly to the motion, which is, I mean, another issue that we'll have to resolve before then, and maybe we come back and have an hour or so discussion on that, is the difference between core values and guiding principles, which I think are different things, could be different things, and, you know, but it's something that we probably want to define before we go to the retreat to have that. I mean, I think it would be helpful to define the parameters of the retreat discussion before, so that we don't end up, you know, discussing and debating those semantics at the retreat.
Councilmember Burt, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes. I think Councilmember Berman's motion addresses the primary concerns that I had. As, when we addressed this topic initially at our retreat in January, we had said that, I believe at that time, that we wanted to come back and have the second component of guiding principles or core values. We hadn't decided what was the most appropriate term. And then, in March, when this went to Policy and Services, I read in the minutes that it said that the Policy and Services Committee was going to have this subcommittee of the mayor and the chair of the committee that would organize the information in order to hold a retreat. And here we are in October, and we're only now having what's scheduled as a one-hour discussion around an action item and not a retreat around this at all. And I think these, you know, although I think it's a little over the top in the preamble to say this is timeless, they are intended to be enduring. And it begs the question, I think Councilmember Berman alluded to this, when we have what we're calling the council priorities, those are council priorities. They're informed by input from the community, but they're the direction and kind of action plan that we're really trying to focus on in the next one to three years. And that's why we, I did what I think was a good move in defining what a priority was and what we have are now priorities. But when we look at either guiding principles or core values, I think what we, at least for me, what I'm attempting to do is try to have those reflect the community values. And this may be just a change in emphasis, but that the council is, would be in the process of really trying to understand and reflect community values. Now, having said that, we're going to have different senses of what those are and different members of the community are going to have different senses of what those are. But it's the intention that's different in emphasis. And so, I think that's, if we're saying that these are going to be enduring, this needs a discussion in depth where we really get to have discourse amongst ourselves and with the community. And I think Councilmember Berman's suggestion that we essentially begin that discourse with the community in a way that we facilitate in advance of that meeting will really be beneficial. And, you know, as we talk about having technology innovation as one of our principles, well, let's apply it to this process. Let's be innovative in how we really engage with the community. And as Councilmember Berman, I think, mentioned, that we've got the civic participation as at least one of the values we've discussed repeatedly. And this is another way to fulfill the value through the very process of creating these guiding principles. So, I don't know where we're going to end up. I will say that I'm apprehensive about the draft that we have here being the straw man for our discussion necessarily. I think it should be broadened somewhat. When I went back, and there were only seven council members who have recorded the, had given written input to Policy and Services Committee back in March, but when I tried to tabulate what were the tentative values, or I should say, core values, yeah, that were identified at that time, and it's a little hard because we had a couple council members that had a dozen, but I don't see that tracking to what became the proposed core values necessarily. We had speakers talk about the youth well-being, and four of the seven council members who responded in writing identified that as a priority. Now, I'm open-minded, a creative way to look at how we might broaden a discussion around a topic like that. But I think it's quite important. I saw also that seven out of seven had specifically identified environmental sustainability as a value. It's a subset under stewardship. And the financial sustainability and the stewardship, all they really have in common, or the primary thing they have in common, I should say, is that they're both about having a sustainable, long-term approach to them. But other than that, I'm not sure that they belong as subsets under the same core value. So, there are, and I saw four out of seven council members had identified emergency preparedness as one of their draft core values, and it didn't make the list at all. So, clearly, there are more than five that have a lot of council interest and I think community interest. That's what will, I think, benefit from a thoughtful and deep discussion on this amongst ourselves and with the community. So, we have a lot to sort out. It's worthwhile to get it right. If we're claiming they're going to be enduring, it shouldn't be just haphazard or an abbreviated process. It needs to be thoughtful, and it needs to reflect a lot of input from the community. And we need to figure out how we reach out to the community in an even broader way from those that we're fortunate to have come and want to speak up like we did tonight, but we want to get an even broader discussion going in the community. So, I look forward to this process moving us forward.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Shepherd?
I'm not really prepared yet to make comment on this particular motion because I was collecting my thinking on the staff report. So, although I am finding gaps between things that were produced from each of us individually and how this list got collected and composed, and I think that there could have been a better integration of that for me with this report. And yet, at the same time, I know that this particular exercise has returned finally on my fourth year of council from the final meeting that we had, I believe, in Policy and Services as I left Policy and Services my first year on council, which was to try to separate out and define what a priority was. And also have an illustrative definition or vision of what Palo Alto embodied. And one of the things that I've been very impressed with in the work that I've done, which has been extensive in this community, has been how passionate people are to become civically engaged and knowledgeable and ready to gear up when issues come forward to this community and the importance that I have in making sure that city staff is queued up to support those activities so that they can be exercised and executed for the betterment of this community. So, I do look for, my definition of core values is how we staff, just, and is this reflective of a staff member that wants to come to work for our city and whether or not they can embody being responsive to this definition? The proposed preamble is a little nonspecific to me, and I was hoping that it would be more visionary so that we could talk about the kind of place Palo Alto is. And I know that we have a whole comprehensive plan that does that, yet at the same time, hardly anybody ever reads a comprehensive plan unless we're looking at a project to see whether or not it, you know, defines, whether or not it has enough not it has enough parts to it that will either support it or not support it to either move the project forward or fails the project. So let me talk about a couple of things. First off, I would like to get a response from Jim on this as to how this could be handled, this motion, and to see whether or not I can be supportive of it. And it's not that I don't want to get this right. I don't want anybody to have a takeaway that I want to rush this through. On the other hand, I do want to be responsive to having an effective retreat this next year where we do have our core principles shaped so that we can go into priority setting. Priorities for me is the work plan for the year, what we're actually going to try to get accomplished, based on a lot of the issues that have arisen throughout, if not the years, then sometimes just the immediate years. And I think our downtown districts' focus is specific to that with our priorities. And I think our priority with Collaboration for Youth Well-Being was also an indication of us wanting to make sure that we were both vertical and horizontal in our staff support and our city's support for youth well-being. And yet, at the same time, I am convinced that this is where families want to move. I think every time I'm in a meeting with a commission, I'll never forget sitting through meetings with the, when we had to do budget cuts and I was the liaison for the libraries. The ending comment when they were trying to shuffle through librarian schedules was, "Do not cut the schedule after school so those kids can come and do their homework." And that was the takeaway. It wasn't, gee, let's make sure we have books at the senior center and stuff like that. It was making sure that we were taking care of the youth that fell into our lap. I also think that education, and I know I wrote that down as one of my core values, is also an important aspect of Palo Alto, which is, which differentiates it often from other communities. And then, before you go into this, I just want to get a couple more things out. One, on quality of life, my poor friends are just horrified when I come up because I ask them, "What does quality of life mean to you?" Because I've been trying to figure it out. I've been trying to figure out, how do you even measure quality of life? Is it just not having potholes, which is what I hear sometimes? Or is it being able to access every single program that you would want your child to have as they develop and grow up and have it be sophisticated, and then also launch them into an elite school? My particular quality of life is having my young adult children being able to live close to me. And that's just only possible if they live in a community that doesn't have the type of schools that we have with the housing values that we have. So I know that there's a whole group of people getting raised right now in Palo Alto that will probably never be able to live in their hometown. So that brings me to the other concept of diversity, both youth, seniors, and ethnicity, which is developing even more and more, and it's a conversation that we're having a harder and harder time to have. So I want to throw those things out there as trying to figure out how to define quality of life. And if we are going to go out to the community to ask, I would actually like people to ask, is it because you get to live close to where you work? Is it because you really like being part of Stanford? Is it the X-factor that Palo Alto has that Mountain View and Menlo Park doesn't have? You know, why Palo Alto and not some of the other communities that really are much more bedroom communities? Because part of the quality of life and part of our citizenship is the corporate and jobs environment that we have and that we attract. And that's, and for me, this is my final comment now before I ask Jim how he will interpret this motion, item number five is innovation and entrepreneurship. It doesn't talk about at all the fact that we are really a jobs magnet for research and innovation. And I think that that should be a little more illustrative because we're going to have to hire for that. We're going to have to hire people that are going to have to figure out how to create a better citizenship with our jobbers that come into town so that we can figure out how to not have them doing solo car trips, et cetera. And I think that that is part of the bundle of Palo Alto that is unique and different from other communities. So now that I've gone through my two pieces here that I think are not working for me, which is a better definition of quality of life and a more expanded version of innovation and entrepreneurship, which is a little bit more possibly Fortune 500-related, instead of just ignoring the fact that we have these multinational corporations in our city boundaries that are being very disruptive in the industries that they are creating new technology in, I would also like to see item number two on the original proposed core values, safe and healthy communities be better defined and more articulate with thriving youth or some other verbiage. So if you wouldn't mind just explaining how you might handle this motion so I can take that into consideration.
Okay. Well, thank you. Make a little stab of it, stab at it, but it will certainly be incomplete and subject to modification because I think that's actually what this process is all about, is how does the council come to a focus and some agreement. So some of you have heard me say this before, but it's actually quite true. Said, you know, what's the difference between a private sector CEO and a public sector CEO? Private sector, when you make a decision, the conversation is over. In the public sector, when you make a decision, the conversation is just starting. And in truth, that really is when, recognizing we had to start someplace to start a conversation. So even the idea of the preamble wasn't so much to say, I actually wrote the preamble wasn't to try to say this is what ought to be the preamble when you are all done, but it was trying to explain the context for how these are expressed. It seems that one thing for sure is that core values that the council would want to publicly articulate and express ought to be valued and valuable. In other words, they ought to mean something. So the process that you're suggesting, in a sense, is a way of sort of saying, well, we, these are important enough to us that we want to really be sure we engage the community. So, I mean, an interesting idea about the Community White Board. And so if you guys want to use your time this way, we can definitely support it. The, obviously, when, after you're done hearing, you'll still have to turn all of that into something that you can express, that you, and in the end, you're going to have to feel that it captures, as a council, how you want to see the back community values. We mean that term very positively, but, you know, it's had some negative overtones in the past, community values, you know, as being almost applied to exclude people or, you know, that sort of thing. So that's a delicate sort of thing for you to ultimately walk. And what we try, what I tried to do in the preamble was saying, at the end of the day, the council wants to capture a message for the community, is what you're saying. But you also, what you're really saying to the community, at least in our thinking, was, as we interpret these, the community values and expressing these core values, we expect that you could hold us accountable to how do we manifest those? How do we reflect those? It doesn't mean you would go out and say you would hold every member of the community accountable to those values, because some people may say, "I just see it differently." And I think that one of the things you don't want to do is in any way be trying to, as we try to express a lot of complicated things in simple language that you end up having anybody feeling that really excluded. So it's a tricky thing for you to do. The thought process on some of these more general headings, I think, were to try to capture some of these things without getting too prescriptive, and it could lead to some discussions. So let's just take the question of emergency preparedness. You know, we talked about that in terms of, that's encapsulated under a safe and healthy community. And if you were just to say emergency preparedness, then it begs the question of saying, well, what about other public safety issues if they're not identified in that way? Does that mean they're excluded? So one of the things you just might also think about as you go forward with this is, there's not necessarily anything wrong with a question and a conversation that has to unfold in something like quality of life. I mean, I know when we were having the discussion, there was some sense that, yeah, even though you couldn't necessarily agree that how you would express what quality of life was, you could generally agree that you want to have equality of life and be committed to achieving and protecting that, understanding that different people could interpret that differently. So it might be sort of challenging to, you know, to sort of, it's kind of, I think you have to write this both as poetry and prose in order for it to have some emotional feeling that you were talking about and not being quite visionary enough. So we have, at least speaking for myself, and I think the committee members, there was no sense of attachment or pride of ownership in trying to put this in a framework that would let you, let you go forward. I do think if, on the motion, and I think this is the intent, if we're going to do this, we ought to do it in a kind of, in a way that does try to capture a lot of attention. So we don't have just people who are usually used to knowing how to access City Hall to be expressing it, because that's just a narrow, I mean, that's a limited perspective. And, you know, that could be fun for us to think about how to design that, so.
Well, I just want to follow up on a couple of things. First off, I'm still not convinced that this is the way to go with this motion, and so I'm going to be listening to colleagues on it. I was really prepared to listen to other people's thinking on how we got to where we are on this and where we need to go. And so I'm sad to see a motion just come off right off the bat, just so you know, so that, I think maybe we should have had a little bit of conversation first. When I get to quality of life, though, I don't know what the bundle of goodies is that we put together for a housing market to be so hot that people cannot get in, and that when I go to a league meeting for the whole cities of the state of California, I don't think there's one city that wouldn't want to change all of our problems of success with their problems. When I listen to Richmond having to figure out how to do eminent domain on underwater mortgages, when I see a council member from Stockton who's trying to get more port deals to beef up coming out of bankruptcy, I think that there is an X-factor here that isn't really captured here in Palo Alto of why people want to be in Palo Alto. And I'm not sure, and I also think that if we are going to try to reach out, that I would like to see some system of reaching out to the corporate world and the job market world, because most of our city employees themselves do not live in town. And I would like to understand why it is that they want to be here and what it is about here that makes them want to fight through some traffic and some terrible parking situations so that we can get a better understanding of how to build a relationship with those 65,000 people that come in every day. Because if we take off something and retreat into a residential-only, you know, thinking category, I think that we will be disruptive to what Palo Alto has been incepted from, from the Stanford days of being a college town, into who we are today and trying to take up the problems that we have and very publicly unwind them, similar to the way the Project Safety Net team has done, and council supported that. I'm not apologetic to that, even though others might think it's embarrassing. I'm happy to take up problems and address them, you know, very intelligently. And I think that that's something that I want to see become, I think that that's why you've put innovation in here, to be creative and innovative with how we do our city work. But at the same time, we are a job incubator. We are an incubator for the next technology that's going to spread throughout the state of California in a huge way for many people's careers and for the economy in general and across the nation and sometimes the globe. And I think that that is not being reflected in here as part of the bundle of things that council has to deliberate and city staff has to manage.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes, thank you. First off, thank you to staff and the committee to work on this, and to Councilmember Berman for setting forth this motion. I guess as I was thinking about this, both at the Policy and Services Committee and subsequent to that, I'd put forth a question that didn't exactly get answered, which is, you know, what is the purpose of this exercise and what are these core values or guiding principles? Are they this council's core values and guiding principles, or are these the community's guiding principles? And if they're the communities, who are we to set those? We need to have broad community participation in trying to develop that. There was a fair amount of reference at the Policy and Services Committee meeting about the reference to the city charter and the comprehensive plan. I don't really see that reflected here. For me, and I may have an amendment to make to the motion here, because I think we need to frame this for the community too, for there to be good and responsive participation in this core value. So I'm not saying this is what it should be, but one way that I look at this is we need our guiding principle. I'm just going to use these terms, and we can come up with other terms or have some other framework of reference. But let's just say we have a guiding principle. We talked at Policy and Services about a mission statement, and that kind of went back and forth and back and forth. But let's just say we have a guiding principle, our bedrock that we, from which flow our core values. So for me, the bedrock and something that's missing here, if this is really the community's core values, is the recognition that we are a government entity and that we serve at the pleasure of the public and that we serve here as a representative body of the public. And I, Jim hasn't heard this from me for a while, but I used to reference this quite often. There's a quote on City Hall Plaza outside this building that was installed when the building was dedicated, and it says, "Government is a trust, and the officers of the government are trustees, and both the trust and the trustees are created for the benefit of the people." And that, for me, is like a bedrock statement that says what our core values should flow out of, that all of our decisions that we make, the recommendations that staff makes, all of our community dialogue should be based on that kind of statement as a touchstone, because that's what we're here to do. We're here to work in the public's best interests. That's what we're here for. So whether it's that or something else, that's what we're about. And so for me, I need to see something referencing that responsibility and that commitment, that dedication to the public and working for the public's best interests. Because we can pick and choose, you know, from the stars, any number of things that are wonderful to pursue. But if we don't reference back that responsibility to the public, and it could just easily become something that this generation or this decade or this council thinks is like the right thing to do or a good thing to do, you have to have that, well, I'm calling it a bedrock. You have to have that bedrock principle in place and as a reference point. So that's kind of my little sermon on that. But I appreciate Councilmember Shepard, Vice Mayor Shepard's comments about how so many other communities would like to be Palo Alto, and, you know, they're struggling with other things. I appreciate that, and I'm certainly not taking difference with that. I appreciate that. At the same time, we have our own issues, that other communities look at us from a distance, and they want to be us. They appreciate, you know, what we're able to accomplish. A lot of it's good fortune, a lot of it's hard effort. There are any number of reasons why we are what we are today. But what some of the other people who look at us with envy don't see is, they don't see behind the curtains. And all of our blessings, all of our good fortune, also carry with it huge responsibilities that make serving the public's best interests even sometimes more difficult, a greater challenge to keep a focus on how do we serve the public when we have huge development pressures, when we have, you know, enormous dedication from members of the public that want community services that we need to try to fund to deliver. You know, it's, I used to watch Monk a lot. It's like, it's a blessing and a curse. It's both sides of that same coin. It is a blessing, but it also comes with huge responsibilities and challenges. Let's see. I was really glad, I won't even go there.
Oh, come on, say something you'd be glad about.
Well, I have said so. So, well, I was very glad to see several of the things that were included here. I don't think this is, it's not ready for primetime. I think we do need to make this a topic of a retreat discussion with much more involvement from the community. I was very glad to see that safe and healthy community was included here. I've been a proponent of healthy communities for, you know, two and a half years or so and trying to push that forward. I keep seeing it over and over and over again in other communities, dialogue and printed material from other communities, how it's much often referred to, program, policy. material from other communities, how it's much often referred to program, policy, direction that other cities have adopted long ago that we have yet to adopt. So I was very, very happy to see that. You know, I have no issue with anything that's here, other than I'm not sure that they're grounded in that, what I'm calling our bedrock principle, in serving the public's best interests. So I'm open to, I'm going to make a friendly amendment here, and I'll look to the maker, seconder, or anybody else to try to come up with other language. But I think, so the amendment would be to return to council in November with a plan for community outreach, to solicit and encourage input from the community framed around a What I'm trying to get at here is, I see a quizzical look on the maker's face, so maybe that's not the right wording. But what I'm trying to get at is, if we just throw out there to the public, what do you think our guiding, our core values are? How are we describing to them or explaining to them what this exercise is about? So maybe that's something that staff should just bring back to us in November. But, you know, if we could get back, you know, quality of life, well, what does that mean, as Vice Mayor Shepherd had mentioned? So I wanted this input to be a meaningful exercise for the community as well as us and a focused dialogue.
So I absolutely agree with that concept of, you know, getting a better understanding of what we're going to be asking council. Oh, sorry. Could you guys scroll up? Thanks.
So if you can find another way to frame it, but I want this input framed.
Go ahead. Is it your intent, does this capture it more framed, if it said framed around a set of possible guiding principles? Are you trying to say that you want to not just have a blank slate in this discussion? A single guiding principle, I don't think is what could possibly capture it. So I'm assuming you're, you want to offer basically some refinement of a larger set of prospective guiding principles than was there in the proposed core values? Or you said, I guess I'm using those terms interchangeably and maybe you didn't mean that. And not as expansive as all those listed by the council members? So I'm assuming you're talking about a set of prospective core values that shared some degree of common interest from the council members who proposed them. Is that captured at all or are you talking about something else?
Well, that's getting at what I'm referring to, but I think we could stay here all night and try to get at just what you're pointing out. So perhaps a better way to say this is to, to set forth for the public the purpose of this exercise. And that way, we're not trying to define a guiding principle or say a...
I mean, I think that's a great point. The public definitely needs to understand what we're trying to do in terms of defining what the core values are. And so I think, you know, trying to, doing a better job than we've done tonight of, you know, explaining to the public what the purpose of this exercise is, is something that would add a lot of value. I don't want to get too prescriptive in terms of narrowing down what the public feels comfortable offering up.
Agree. Agree. I just don't want it to be a dartboard.
But for sure. I mean, you know, there should be some sort of, you know, explanation to the public of what we're trying to do here.
So the amendment then would be to, when this, and much of what is put here in the amendment is already taken from the motion that was, okay, input from the community framed around a purpose, or framed around the purpose of this exercise. Is that general enough to?
Sure.
Okay. So that's accepted by?
Yeah. I mean, we need to figure out what that purpose is at that November meeting, I'm assuming.
Exactly.
But yes, that's perfectly fine with me.
And seconder as well? Great, thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I enthusiastically support the amended motion. Looking at this document, I was struck by the fact that three of the four people in the Policy and Services Committee scratched their head a little bit and say, gee, let's look at, see if we can find policy statements or vision statements from the comp plan that we can use to help people tailor their guiding principles or their core values. The problem with the vision statements is they are statements that help people like the council deal when you have a clash of values in the committee. And we have had many of those over the last year or so. The problem with the vision statements in the comp plan is the comp plan was written in 1998. It came out of a period of 30 years where there is very little demographic change in Palo Alto. Over the last 12 years, 14 years, we've had dynamic residential growth and we've had very dynamic business growth. Things are changing. And I guess we find a number of people from different parts of town around different issues coming and saying, what's happening? What's going on? Where are we going? What are you turning us into? Are you changing my quality of life? I thought Ms. Blanchard made a very effective point about basic demographics. I guess I've heard an interesting statistic about California too. It's the only county west of the Mississippi that is losing that population group between five and 17. There is an important demographic statistic about California, state we live in, every year. Over the last five or six years, 110,000 people, young people have migrated out of the state. The largest portion of them are people 25 to 40. Second largest group are kids between zero and five. Those kind of things say, okay, we're changing, but what kind of changes are we going through? And what can we do as a community to address these changes, to make ourselves, to adapt ourselves to fundamental forces so that our quality of life is something that we want? And hopefully with public input, with a nice definition of what we need in terms of guiding principles or vision statements or whatever they are. We can go through a process that would have a hard ending date, our retreat in January, and see if we can come up and deal, maybe not make a timeless determination of values, but at least a set of values or guiding principles that can help us deal with this process of change we're going through as a community.
Well, I like the motion that Councilmember Berman made and was seconded by Councilmember Burt. I think that was going in the right direction and I will support it. I'm a little concerned, in fact, I'm a lot concerned about the way the debate has gone on over the last more than an hour now, because I worry that we're going to turn this into a discussion of what a comprehensive plan should be. I hear lots of different things expressed by my colleagues here about items that I think would be appropriate in the discussion of a new comprehensive plan or revision to it, but not, in my view, on a discussion of core values. Excuse me, could you please? Sorry, but I can't talk when somebody's whispering in my ear. The issues are that several of you raised, I think, are of great interest, but I don't think they belong in a discussion of guiding principles, which I think to be enduring, to use Councilmember Burt's word, have to be very, very general and not get down to specific issues that are really what we talk about when we do a comp plan or whether we adopt new priorities for the year or take a stand on a particular issue. So I really worry about whether we're opening this up into a process that we're, it's going to spin out of control. And I really do worry about that. And I think that when this comes back to the council, either in November or at a retreat, I can tell you that my goal is going to be to keep this focused on a few very generalized statements that can apply on an enduring basis and don't get us to particular items that may be of conflict in one area of the city or some demographic group or whatever. Because I think that's not where we want to be. That's, if you take, for example, Councilmember Holman's referral to the statement that's on the plaza, that's the type of statement I think is appropriate, but it covers things that go on and on and on, things that might have been an issue back in the 1970s as well as issues here in 2013. So that's my overwhelming concern. And I think that it's a good idea that we put forth statements such as this, as the committee came up with, to give the community a stalking horse to reply so that they do not get off on whatever their particular issue might be. I'm reminded that one of the reasons we adopted a definition of what a priority should be was that, I think in recent years, more and more people were bringing to us their pet concern and felt that if we didn't include it as a priority, that we were somehow ignoring the issue. And that's not the case, as I think the council thus unanimously, as I recall, adopted the definition of a priority so that we were not struggling with the idea that we were offending people. And I hope we don't get into that on these core values, guiding principles, whatever we want to call them, where we're going to feel that if we don't include somebody's suggestion, that we're somehow ignoring them. I think that we have to, while I'm not setting forth a number here, that was discussed at Policy and Services. I think one or two members of the committee felt we should have no more than six. I don't know whether six is right. I'm not going to certainly get very excited about whether we have six or seven or five, but there's some number around there that I think is appropriate. And it's not 20, 30, 40, because those aren't, if we get up into numbers like that, we're not talking about core values. We're talking about something very different. I don't know whether it's a comp plan or some new animal, but it's not core principles. Because if you have that many, as I think the manager stated, you really don't have any. What you have is a very different political animal. And I think that his example was on emergency preparedness was right on, that emergency preparedness is something we care about, that we've made it a priority for several years, though not this year. But isn't it subsumed under public safety, which of course, in one way or another, is obviously one of our core principles, no matter the language that we use to reflect it. And I thought that Jim's comment also, that this is part poetry and part prose was right on, except I would modify it to say this is more poetry. This is more the, well, if we really did a great job, it would be far more the Gettysburg Address than it would be the Constitution. So I hope we can keep those things in mind and not get ourselves bound, ground down into a process that would go on and on, then make, and come up with something that really would be not worthy of being called core values.
So I'm going to associate my comments directly with Councilmember Klein's. I had the same concerns listening to the debate today. I think we want to keep the core values general, as Councilmember Klein said. I had some concerns that we may move to some sort of a prescriptive notion. I don't think people need to look at these core values and say, this is the answer to this question. We have a job up here to do and our job is to interpret and to think about what's best for the community. And if we had a group of written comments that we would then say, oh, this requires this result on Maybell, or this requires this result on this big issue before us, I think that's a problem. And I don't think that's where we're going. I think we need general statements and general statements that we all agree on. I don't agree that we need to define quality of life. Quality of life means different things to different people, and that's what a core value says. Everyone knows what you mean, but different people have different emphasis on it. And if you tried to define quality of life, you're going to define it in a certain way for some people, and I think you end up being prescriptive in a way that may not allow your core values to be timeless or enduring. You end up with political values at that point. And political values are different. If you're, if we're inventing these core values to gain a political advantage so that when something comes up, we can say, ah, got you, it's here in the core value. You can't do that. We haven't done enduring core values. And so that's my concern with this, that we keep it general. And I think emergency preparedness was a great thing. I've always been a strong supporter of emergency preparedness and, you know, and frankly, youth well-being as well. I don't necessarily have a problem with putting youth well-being in here, but, and I actually put it on my, on my list. I put, I put emergency preparedness and youth well-being. And when we sat down and talked about this as a group, myself, Councilmember Niss and the city manager, it was really the city manager who said, you know, you want to make sure that it's broader than emergency preparedness or youth well-being. What about senior well-being? You know, we care and value our seniors in this community. And I know that sounds political at this moment, but we do. Frankly, I think we care about each group. And so there may be arguments for putting youth forward, and I'm not saying they're not. It's a good discussion to have. But on the other hand, I think we need to be careful about being too prescriptive of what we're doing. So I hope as we move forward that we will keep it in broad categories like Councilmember Klein said. All right, let's vote on the board. There's only one motion.
Incorporated.
Incorporated that. And that passes unanimously with Councilmembers Niss and Price absent. All right.
So you heard it here first. When we come back, it will not be perfect.
We expect perfection, Jim. We should have added that one. All right, so we're going to retire into closed session, but first we have a public speaker on item number four, Herb Bork. Yes, which is Conference with the Real Property Negotiations, California Government Code Sessions, the post office, or Curbly.
Right, Curbly. Thank you, Mayor Shaw. One of the newspapers suggested treating the playing fields at Curbly different than the buildings. And I recall the Naylor Act that was enacted at the time, that school properties will be coming available throughout the state and that there was a, you know, a lower price on playing fields being acquired by government entities like the city, and that should, to me, should be reflected in any lease payments. So if you're thinking about what to do in terms of negotiations with the school district, I believe that you should take the Naylor Act formula into consideration if you're thinking of playing fields. The other comment I have related to that is something that will be coming to you in open session, but it's related since it goes to cost of service. That is, you know, people who are interested in infrastructure and not services, people like our developers who might live in Portol Valley or Atherton or Woodside, are not as interested in paying for the services, but would expect that instead of using general government funds for services, that, you know, each service pays for itself completely. How this relates to Curbly and in any negotiations is that if... How this relates to Coverley and in any negotiations is that if you're going to be taking that attitude to figure out the cost of service and every service should pay 100% rather than taking money from general government funds, then you have to take into account both the lease payments to Coverley and the capital of improvements to Coverley and figuring out what the cost of service is for each service that's using Coverley based upon the useful life of the capital of improvements and the share of the floor area that each service is using. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go into closed session.